Happy of what? You missed that.
Go in. Take the roll. Thank you.
Nancy Kapka.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Keith Matu.
Here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Can't believe we started with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we all rise, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we start with student perspectives? Mr. Bill.
(laughing). Good evening. We have four students here tonight representing three new clubs at South High. The Robotics Club, the Movie Club, and the Equestrian Club. And so as those clubs get started for students, we thought these were things you might not typically hear about, so we invited them to come tonight for Student Perspectives. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Sorry about that. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Nathan Gresik, one of the co-founders of the new Robotics Club here at Downers Grove South. I have been called to explain the process of how it was formed. And it started actually over a year ago in October by emailing their Student Activities Director, Mr. Aldworth. And it took a long time to actually be put into place. It actually just started this year in late August. And the reason it took so long was because of, unfortunately, it took a long time to find sponsors because for something as specific as robotics, it actually, we need a sponsor who actually knows what they're doing and can actually help us and direct us with that kind of a thing. So you can't just choose anyone for that kind of a job, you know? So it took a little while, but we finally found a suitable adult to sponsor us and help us out and direct us because even though we are very interested and there's a lot of enthusiasm in the club, we need a little bit of direction just being kids, you know? So, yeah. So, um, it started this year and we raised awareness by putting up posters and putting out announcements and stuff like that. And then also Mustang Fury, some of you may know what that is. It's just basically a big open house for all the clubs here at South. And we got many people to sign up through that. So actually, our club is now quite successful, I would say, and we have started doing many cool things with robotics as my friend, Rob Quinn, will elaborate upon.
Hi, my name's Rob Quinn, and as Nathan mentioned, we started and run Robot Club together. And already over 40 students have showed interest in the club. And we've been consistently getting more than 20 people at each of our meetings, which is every other week. And right now, we have four groups of about five to seven kids. And they are working with robots such as Lego Mindstorms, Vex kits, which we use for competitions, and Arduino, which is another type of robot platform. And after just two meetings, we already have groups that have a complete robot that has been driving around the room, bouncing off of walls and turning around. So, um...
Isn't that neat?
So it's like a great opportunity for them to expand on their science and design and programming skills. And even if they don't have any, that's where they can learn. And, um, in the future, we'll be teaching them more about programming and more details about how to build more advanced projects. And they'll learn like a real exciting application of the knowledge that they have or that they will gain. And most importantly, robots are a lot of fun to make. And by the time you get one that works and does what you want, it's just a really exciting and rewarding experience for the students and also for myself and Nate as leaders. So now we'll talk about the new movie club.
Can I ask a quick question before you start? Are you, it's okay. Are you planning any, to participate in any competitions or to host any contests?
Yeah, we're looking into our options for that. And also, we might do competitions just within the club against the like two teams or groups.
Let us know.
Yeah, please do.
That would be fun.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Where do you get the parts for robots? Do you have people donate things or...
Oh, our sponsors, Ms. Moses was helping us have money to spend to get parts for that. And it's somewhat included with the career and technical department.
Yeah, especially because the project lead the way. Because it hasn't happened this year. They have all the resources they need to start next year, but since it isn't happening right now, we can actually tap into some of the resources to have some significant influence for robotic endeavors.
So where do you buy robot parts?
The robot store.
Come on, they're on every corner.
I guess, I haven't been looking lately, so that's why.
The Lego sets come from Walmart or Twizzler us.
Oh, okay.
The more advanced projects I've found at Radio Shack and Micro Center and online.
Okay, all right.
Did you guys do much with robotics when you were in middle school?
Yeah, I've been using the Lego robots since I was really young.
Okay.
So I think that's a great place to start for people that don't have any knowledge or very basic knowledge. And there's also a more advanced group.
I have an eighth grade daughter at O'Neil right now who's been on a little, a small team of students who've been working with robotics last year and now this year, and they go to a competition.
Okay.
Peoria last year, I think is where it was at. Anyhow, she was bumming because she said that we didn't have, there wasn't much opportunity after she came to high school.
Well...
And now, ah, she'll be excited to hear that there's something here waiting for her.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll be learning a lot more about this. So, excellent. Fantastic.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Kating, a junior at Downers Grove South, and I'm the president of Movie Club. My sophomore English teacher last year was Ms. Thornquist, who is also the Film Studies teacher. I knew that I loved watching movies and figured that there would be other kids at South who shared my enthusiasm. Since the Film Studies class is only open to seniors, I asked Ms. Thornquist to join me in sponsoring a movie club. I met with my counselor, Mr. Christie, Student Activities Director, Mr. Aldworth, and Ms. Thornquist at the end of last year to present the idea of a movie club and facilitate the process of getting it started. I filed the necessary paperwork and received approval in May of last year. At the start of the school year, I focused on the PR aspect of getting the club started by having posters put up around the building, announcements in the morning, and posting on Facebook and Twitter. My efforts paid off on September 24th when over 20 students attended the first meeting of the new DGS Movie Club where we watch and discuss various movies. Free popcorn and a great time was had by all.
All right.
Thank you.
Popcorn did it.
Bring them in.
Yeah. I have a quick question. How often are you going to meet and are you going to watch a movie at every meeting? How does that all, how does that all play out?
We plan to meet two times a month where we watch a movie in the first meeting and then have a group discussion in the second meeting.
And is it a committee decision on what movies you're going to watch?
Yeah, we pick a genre each month. Like this upcoming month's going to be comedy. And then all the members pick one of their favorite movies from that genre, and we have a big vote at the end of our discussion.
Wow.
So it's a big group decision.
That will be fun.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
They don't have to be current movies?
No, they don't. We pick from any type of movie.
Wow. That's great.
Hello, I'm Agla Cataraquita, and I'm founder of Equestrian Club. The idea came to me, well, first for the Mustangs, so I thought it was ridiculous that we didn't have anything horse-related.[569.16][569.16](laughter). And I've been involved with horses for all my life, and I got the opportunity when I was 14 to go volunteer, and it just escalated from there. And now I have a bunch of opportunities to ride, and I thought it would be cool for people who aren't as like, haven't had the same opportunities to get into the horse world because there's a lot to offer in there, and it's really fun to get to work with these really cool animals and just to find out how they work and ride and a lot of fun stuff. For, the reason I thought of having a club was my English teacher, first sophomore year, Mrs. Vanek, she was into horses also, so we'd like spend several minutes before and after class just discussing things. So last year, I came up to her and I proposed that we start this club, and she was all for it. So we talked to Mr. Aldworth, and it just went from there. It was really fun, so. We're still trying to convince someone to let us keep a miniature horse in the courtyard.[637.04][637.04](laughter). There, our first meeting, we had around 20, and lately, there's about eight or nine that come, so.
And where do you, where do you ride out of?
It depends. Usually during the weekday, like the week, we'd talk about, like last week, I brought in all my tack, and we discussed like different types of tacks and different type of riding. And then we're going to go down to Arabian Nights Farms, which is just down the street, and my friend's going to ride a couple horses, and we're going to learn about like different riding styles, and she, they're going to put on like an exhibition. And we're going trail riding in a couple weeks, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good.
Do you two have a question?
No, no. It sounds great.
Yeah.
I just have a question just like for everybody. I really admire the fact that you guys got a club started.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, it took a lot of chutzpah. So in the course of doing that, what did you learn about yourself or about the system or...
I personally learned that if you want something to happen, you can't just sit around and wait for someone else to do it for you, you have to kind of just get out there and do it yourself. And there's a lot of people that'll come up and will support you in what you're trying to do.
Very good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's really great.
Awesome.[729.12][729.12](applause).
Okay, moving on to a report on student achievement data.
Thank you, Dr. Kapka. Several years ago, the board was searching for some indicators that would quantify student achievement because at the time, the only thing that we were using was the per-year student achievement exam results. One of the issues with that is that, of course, since CLB is continuing to increase the percentage of students required to meet expectations, the point where now virtually no high school in the state with a couple of exceptions is able to reach those marks. And we thought we'd be better off to diversify our quantification or the quantitative measures that we're using to define this sort of concept. So we came up with a combination that included the per-year student achievement exam, ACT, both of the graduating class, and looking at the change from previous years to the current years in ACT. The change in the current, in the current senior class between the three ACT measures, Explore, Plan, and ACT. And then finally, we, as you know, we've been very interested in increasing the number of students who take Advanced Placement courses and Advanced Placement tests. So we're sort of looping or grouping all of these different quantifications into our concept of student achievement. Every year, we make a report to the board. This year, it's a little later because of the superintendency evaluation and because we did not receive all the information in a very timely way. We never really know when we're going to get some of this. But tonight, we're going to make the presentation. And Gina Zicardi is in charge of this, and I'm going to let her take it from here.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about our AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress, our results from the April testing, as well as, Dr. McDonald said, some of the other indicators of how students are doing in District 99. I'll also share with you a couple of examples of different intervention data sets, just so you can see other ways in which we measure student achievement. In this report, both Associate Principals for Curriculum and Instruction will present from North and South as well. And I'll speak from the district. So as Dr. McDonald said, in reporting AYP, we did not meet the 92.5 level in either reading or math. That said, when you compare last year's results to this year's results, we went up in every area. So with our all students, our Hispanic students, our black students, students with disabilities, and so on. I did share with you a couple ways in which we went up. We did make it with our white students in reading and with two subgroups in, thank you, in math, our Asian and our white students. And this data again is for the juniors that were tested in April, so it's a class of 2014. We did see, as I said, increased in nearly every area, particularly in reading. When we look at our African-American students, we increased by just over 15%. And for economically disadvantaged students, almost at 13%. So we are making progress, but we still didn't meet the standard that was set. Our results from the class of 2014 first day were slightly down from last year. That said, I'll show some other indicators of our ACT actually increasing when we look at the class of 2013. The ACT did change the reporting protocols, so now students that, students with disabilities who have accommodations are now factored in to the numbers. So essentially, in the past, they didn't always factor in all the students who had extended time or who had all kinds of different accommodations. Now they are factored in on day one of the PSAE. The only exception to that would be students who take an alternate assessment, and that's very few students. We also see some variance from class to class because remember, it's a different group of students each April taking the test. We have also, as Dr. McDonald said, tracked the data from students in District 99, all the way from eighth grade when they're in our center schools taking the Explore, all the way to taking PSAE Day One. So we do see some individual student differences. And then different years are target subgroups, the smaller size, one or two students can impact the percentages. So the larger the subgroup, usually the better the figures or the greater percent. We'll see in some cases, one or two students can make a substantial difference. So in the state, as a result of the change in reporting by ACT, they anticipated scores would go down by .3. In fact, our scores, when you look at our students, again, when we track them from Explore to Plan, Practice PSAE, and then PSAE Day One, went down .2. So for that group, the class of 2014 that were with us for that interval, the scores did go down, but less than what was anticipated. We also look at the GEM scores, again, to determine what that percentage is, and we see that our students' percentage of growth from Explore to Day One PSAE is at nearly 36%. It's a 35.9%.
Wow.
If you look at the class of 2014, the average Explorer score coming into District 99 was 17, and the average ACT was 23.1 for the same group of students, a little over 1,000, 1,008 if I remember correctly, students that we've tracked that have been with us through all those testings. We do also, as Dr. McDonald said, look at Advanced Placement, and I'll share some data with you about our Advanced Placement scores, both enrollment of unique students, so students who are taking one or more AP classes last year, and also the Performance Series reading data, which I shared with you in the summer. And then I'll share a couple of other different indicators of success by our students. So this is the graduating class because remember, we're looking at ACT a couple of different ways. We're looking at the April testing, which is every student in Illinois, and we also look at ACT, in other words, the highest score that all of our students achieve. So this is by the graduating class of 2013. And what you can see on here is that our scores actually went up by .1. And while that's not substantial to go up by .1, I would argue that it actually is when you consider that both the state and the nation decreased.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see that, I tracked it for all the years just so you can see how we have gone every year. But if you look specifically at 2013, you'll see that nationally, down by .2, and the state, as anticipated, down by .3. We, however, went up by .1. Another way that we look at our ACT scores is specifically in reading and math, and we look at them by students who achieved a 19 or lower or a 20 and above. One of the reasons we look at it that way, just so you know, is that if students can score 20 and on day two, when they take the work keys, both reading and math exams, score a five, which is meeting standards, in most cases, they will meet standards. They will make adequate yearly progress as an individual student. So if a student gets a 20, the likelihood of them meeting or exceeding 20 or higher state standards is much greater.
Okay.
It's possible that a student can get a 19 and, for example, a six on the work keys and meet standards as well, but we don't see that as often. So 20 is kind of the breaking point, if you will. And you can see that we have had a slight dip in ACT math, and then we've had a slight increase in our ACT reading, and that is in those students that are scoring a 20 or higher. And this is on PSAE. Again, that gives us a nice sense of all students because all students are taking that test, not picking here the highest score, picking what they did that single day in So shifting now to Advanced Placement. As I said earlier, we track not only test scores, but also enrollment. And we've made a concerted effort, as you know, as one of the district goals, to have more students take the highest level of courses, both honors and AP courses. And so what this shows is how we're trending each year dating back from when we started actually recording unique students in AP.
That's really...
So as we look at students by year, you will note that we did go down a little bit, 1.6% with our sophomore class, although there's fewer opportunities for sophomores. More AP classes are offered at the junior-senior level, but we do have a few that many sophomores do enroll in. Our juniors also went down a little bit, but our seniors went up. And I think the most important data point is actually when you look at the class of, the graduating class, excuse me, of 2013, and you'll note they went up by about 2.2%. And so depending on the year, depending on the graduating class, we are increasing. In fact, we've increased for the last couple of years, the number of students taking AP courses.
So that indicates approximately a third of our students...
Little more, yeah.
...graduated 2013, took AP class.
And that's just AP, that's not honors.
At some time in their career.
At some time in their high school career. That is correct. And that's just one class. So in other words, there could be students who've taken multiple AP classes.
Right. Can you go back with this one slide, please?
Sure. Okay, why is that not working?
Hit it twice.
Hit it twice? Sorry, I'm on Jim's computer.
So there was this huge jump in 2010.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know why?
I mean, I have some ideas as to why. We really started to push students...
Started to push it.
...into honors and AP courses. That happened in many departments, English specifically.
So it was a concentrated effort to push it?
It was a concentrated effort. We also, and you'll notice as it's gone up each year, for the most part, we have the one dip, we also made greater opportunities for students at the sophomore level. So if you look at the yellow, I guess you would say, color, you'll see the increase in part because US History AP was originally offered at the junior-senior level. And then we shifted it back so students could either take regular US History or AP US History. And so you see that increase as well. Prior to that, most students were only taking the AP Computer Science with a few exceptions, where we might have a sophomore in a junior-level class who was really accelerated. Those exceptions typically would fall in math, and those would be students that were several years beyond where they should be. But there was definitely concerted effort, and more students that can get into the honors classes as freshmen, for example, the greater chance, obviously, that they're going to matriculate into the AP classes.
Thank you.
So in spite of increasing, as Dr. McDonald said, about a third, a little over a third of our students taking AP classes, so we're having more students take AP classes, we would expect, one might expect, the scores on those tests to come down a little bit because you have more students taking the test.
Right.
You're not necessarily going to have as many students, what we call passing, which is earning a three, four, or five. That said, we are still hovering at approximately 83% if you look at last year. Slightly higher the year before, and there were a couple of years where we were higher, but by and large, we're still somewhere around 82, 83% of students still. And you can see the increase of test takers as well. So we're increasing not just the number of students in the classes, but also the number of test takers. So a couple of interventions that we have in place, and you've heard about many of these before, but just to review as I go into talking about a couple of them. We obviously have many supports in place. The board has supported many of those with extra, for example, math classes for students, extra lunchtime supports, all kinds of things that have helped us to meet the needs of our students. We're now doing progress monitoring through the Performance Series reading test for freshmen through juniors. We have the extended instructional time for Math 1, so students are in that class for a period and a half. That half period's opposite their lunch. We have the ongoing integration of the Common Core Habits of Mind in all our classes. And then, of course, as you know, the speaking and listening standards are being integrated across the curriculum. So a few building level interventions that we have in place, some of these you've heard about at length before, a couple of them a little bit different or new that we haven't reported on. One is Algebra Assist. That actually now is called Math 1 Assist. However, since we're reporting for the previous year, I left it at the, as the previous name. I'll talk about that in a minute or two. Our Summer Bridge, which we've reported on many times, but we continue to refine each year, and we'll do so for Common Core Math for next year. Back on track, our Strive Tutoring Program, our Test Prep Class, we're certainly co-teaching more than we ever have in the past. We have peer tutoring going on and seen some great things this year with our math peer tutors that are actually working exclusively, we have several students at South High School specifically working with ELL students. As we have made the shift to Math 1, there are certainly more communication needs, and those students need extra support. So one of the ways in which we're supporting that is by having other students actually go in and work with those students in a, an ELL support class. Also doing peer tutoring at the Literacy Center as well. We have literacy coaching, as you know. We have three levels now of direct instruction, strategies for academic success. And we are also a newly hired African-American parent outreach, and I believe North High already had one meeting, and South is having theirs, oh, two meetings, and South is having theirs on Tuesday tomorrow. And we've also been working extensively this year with a bilingual parent outreach as well, and seen some increases in parents actually participating in that. Had a couple of one-evening activity already, and then a Saturday that we were here at the ASC.
That's great.
So Algebra Assist, I thought I'd talk about Algebra Assist first. Last year was our first year of Algebra Assist, and this is a little bit difficult to assess because it is a fluid intervention. And by fluid, I mean that students are entered into the class, if you will, it's opposite lunch, they're taken out of a lunch resource, put in Algebra Assist for 20, approximately 20 minutes a day, 25 minutes a day, when they exhibit that they are struggling. So when a student begins to struggle, and a teacher has already put in place several Tier One in-class interventions, and that student is still not successful, the student is entered into the Algebra Assist program where there are, there's an actual algebra teacher there who works with the student and the teacher to really be strategic about working on the individual needs of that student. So it's not a class in the sense that everyone's at the same place, it's completely differentiated, where one student might be working on one problem or one chapter, one issue, another student on another. It's hard to assess because some students may only be in there for a month. Other students, we're in there for a semester. Some students, unfortunately, were in there for more, almost a full year. So what I decided to do was assess it based on one quarter within the program. So what I decided to do was assess it based on one quarter within the program. Figuring that approximately nine weeks would be enough time to say a student in the program should exhibit some positive results. And we had a total of 151 students that were in there for approximately a quarter or more. This is district-wide, so both schools. So I looked at that as the indicator. Eighty percent of them ended up passing their algebra class first semester. And some of them were only in for a quarter. Fifty-eight percent of them ended up with an A, B, or C grade. Second semester, the results were not as good, but still 75% ended up passing the class. So without this intervention, we don't necessarily know that they would have failed, but we do know that they did indeed pass. And about 44% for second semester did earn an A, B, or C. So the average is about 78% of students that entered into this program that were there for a quarter or more, did end up passing algebra, and therefore moving on to the next level. As I said earlier, there were some students in there for a shorter period of time. And then, obviously, passing algebra, doing better in algebra, and then moved out. And the intervention is designed to be fluid, where students move in and out. Some of the students, we did have, obviously, one student get an A. We had several students get Bs. Ideally, I personally would like to see students move out when they're getting Cs, but I think sometimes students really want to be there, because they feel like that support is really helping them. Teachers who want to do the best for their students don't necessarily want them to leave, and obviously, risk not doing as well. So we have been working a little bit on the criteria for in and out, and how we monitor that. But it really is, I think, working as it's designed and to be fluid, because there were substantial numbers of students who were in there for just a matter of weeks. Summer Bridge. I know you've heard about Summer Bridge before, but I thought I'd share a few things about Summer Bridge. And part of the reason for doing that is that Summer Bridge is something that we offer for eighth-grade students. And we have seen great fluctuation in the numbers of students, as you can see from the participants. We did change it a few years ago, so students could only attend for three weeks. And this is a program for eighth graders prior to entering District 99. They have to be within a certain explore band. And it is basically to provide them with the skills they'll need to be successful their freshman year. We did see some dips when we didn't offer transportation to students, and when we didn't waive fees. The last couple of years, we waived tuition. So these students attend for free, and provided transportation. And we do see an increase in the number of students that did participate, perhaps, as a result of that. One thing that I think is important, as we look at the grades, the averages are quite high, at 85% of students earning, being successful first semester. For example, in math, and 76% second semester. And in English, 89% first semester, and 87% second semester. So these students who are coming in with lower than average, below-average explore scores are being successful freshman year.
This is measuring, what is this measuring exactly?
Grades, semester one.
So, so if I look at 2012 math, I'm seeing semester one, semester two.
There is a D.
I'm seeing eighty, eighty-some percent versus seventy-some percent. That's a measurement of how many people, how many students are passing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so A, B, C, or D?
Corresponding course.
Who took this program?
Who took this program in the summer, and who, in their math class, whether it was Algebra, you know, 200, whether it was Algebra 300, and in many cases, it's Algebra 200, because again, we're a year back, passing that class.
And the, if, the presumption, if we didn't do this, we wouldn't have this many passing?
For sure. Well, it's hard to say for sure, because many students partake in it. And we could also divide it between those that did just three weeks, to determine the effectiveness. We do also survey students to see how they've done. We've also given an explore test at the end of Summer Bridge many years, to see if their explore scores have gone up. So we've tried to pick different indicators to determine whether or not it's successful. I would argue part of it is about the students feeling comfortable in high school.
Sure.
It's about being with other students from other schools, because both our high schools are very large schools.
Yeah.
And I think that that can be difficult for some freshman students. They also get to know, in some cases, teachers that they may end up having, because a lot of these students will go on and take Strategies for Academic Success, which is one of our direct instruction reading classes.
And the way they get into the Summer Bridge program, you said, was by looking at the explore results from eighth grade?
Basically, we look at explore scores for reading and math, and we determine which students are eligible, based upon that. We send them an invitation. It's by invitation only.
Okay.
And then they can sign up if they wish.
I can see where that works pretty well with kids coming in from feeder districts. How, the transfer students, children, how are we connecting there?
Transfer students typically do not enroll in Summer Bridge, because many of them do not come in even in time to enroll for Summer Bridge. And oftentimes, do not come in with scores or with data that we can use to determine the appropriate placement. They do take some tests in August, but this runs the same time as summer school. So in most cases, it's after, after the fact. We do have, in both buildings, though, and it's a little bit off of Summer Bridge, but I think it might speak to, to what you're talking about. We do have transfer programs for students. It's a little bit more difficult for students who are freshmen that come in over the summer, but particularly students who come in after the first day of school, several weeks in, or transfer mid-year, whether they're sophomores, juniors, it doesn't matter. We do have transfer programs to students. Again, trying to make those large high schools a little bit smaller.
Yeah. Well, this is just, this is a little tough, because we look at, we say, well, obviously, those numbers being 100% would be what we're really after.
Absolutely.
Right, so. And it looks like.
Isn't that always the case?
Right, well, that's the, that's the whole reason for having this program, certainly, so.
Well, and I, I should say, it's not just passing. These are students who scored As, Bs, or Cs. So we're not just looking for passing.
These are As, Bs, or Cs.
As, Bs, or Cs. It's not just about passing, so to speak. It's about being successful. I suppose one could argue a C. But I think, in this case.
Compared to what it might have been.
Exactly. Okay, so.
Sure.
This diagram, students who are earning As, Bs, or Cs.
Freshman year.
Freshman year. That have gone through the Summer Bridge program.
That's impressive.
Starting in the last three years, they may have only been in for three weeks. Prior to that, it was a six-week program. They can enroll for all six weeks, though.
And clearly, by looking at those explore results, we're, we're seeing a student is potentially in danger of not.
Absolutely.
Getting here. And so thinking about it that way, this seems pretty, this is pretty impressive, I think.
Yes, it is.
If they double enroll, is some of the material presented the same? Or is each three-week independent of the other three-week?
Independent. And so we oftentimes will counsel students into which one, if they're open. Sometimes they have vacation, or summer camps, or other things that they're not open. But if they're open, and for some reason, only wish to do three, and I only know this because of the building level, I was working with families on this, I would counsel students into a certain set.
Is one then science, and the other one math, or?
Just reading and math.
Just reading and math.
Just reading and math.
So one three-week is reading, and one three-week is?
And in reading, it's a lot about strategies. So what strategies they can use in other classes as well. So in other words, they're going to have global connections as freshmen, or in biology, or whatnot.
Okay.
Social studies.
Thank you.
Back on track, math. And I think the asterisk actually did not show up. I changed the color on here, so I apologize for that. Because when I went back in, I, the shading didn't show it. Back on Track is a program that we've run for several years, and you've seen this data before. I just added, obviously, the last year of data. But it's a program that I think is an interesting program. It's based on students who received, who passed first semester of algebra, typically Algebra 200, not always, but typically, and did not pass, or received a D, although it is harder to get the students who got the D to want to enroll.
They passed.
Second semester. The idea of this program is to get them back on track. Back on track in terms of their skills, back on track in terms of taking the next class, back on track in terms of being able, not only to go on, in the case of Algebra 200, into geometry, but then the following year, when they go into advanced algebra. And it's a program that you can see by the number. We have not been able to enroll a significant number of students in. Even though we target students, we, we send them letters, we encourage them, we make phone calls off. There's all kinds of steps we go through. But what I think is important about this program is that the percentage of students earning credit with As, Bs, and Cs was substantially high the first three years, and then went significantly down in 2010. And we reassessed, and looked at the students that were actually entering, and many of them were students that simply had failed. We were not enrolling students that often, that had D, had passed with a D. And so in 2011 and 12, we looked at students who had actually earned credit. So in other words, they got back on track with their credit, not necessarily with their skill set. However, in some cases, these are students who may have failed 20 percentile, who now scored, for example, a 69%, which is, is growth. So that is why the figures look a little bit different in the last couple of years. I think what's important about Back on Track is that these students are able to go on in the sequence. That these students actually have their grade replaced. So if I fail, if I'm the student, and I failed second semester of Algebra 200, and I enroll in Back on Track, and I get a C, my grade on my, is now a C. So I'm getting my credit back, but I'm also getting that grade replacement.
That's cool.
Sort of interesting for this year. I know it's not on the chart. For this year, we had 13 students enroll. Four ended with Bs, one with an A, six Cs, and two Ds. So we are seeing some success.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the numbers go up, but with Common Core Math, I'm not really sure how Back on Track Math will work. With algebra, the significant part of algebra was first semester. So these students had to pass first semester in order to go on, and, and be in Back on Track. With Math 1, and regardless of which pathway, traditional or integrated, the bulk of the, the algebra occurs actually in second semester. So we actually have already met to talk about Back on Track, to see how we would modify it, or how it, or if we modify it for next year. So it's an interesting program, as we've had it for several years. But with the changes in the math Common Core curriculum, we may need to change the program. And then Strive. This is Strive in both buildings for 1213. I know we've reported on it before. Strive is an after-school tutoring program. We had 42 failing entry grades, and only 17 that ended up failing second semester. So we decreased the failing by about 40%. We had 28 C grades, so you can see the shift is going towards D, and then obviously, to C. And we had a 60% increase in our, in our C grades. So Strive is a, mostly freshmen. We do have a few upperclassmen in there, but it's predominantly freshmen. And then one other thing I'll just mention, supplemental educational services. You may hear about it, because this is the first time that as a district, we are required to provide supplemental educational services at both high schools. We are required to provide it, because we have not made adequate yearly progress for the last three years. And we will be required to offer it every year going forward that we don't make AYP. It's for Title I schools, and we've been collecting Title I funds for the last three years now. I am working with 28 different tutoring providers, different companies. Many of them, about half of them are online, and the other half are face-to-face, or in some cases, a hybrid. We will actually, we just got our PPA. This morning, I was able to confirm that we'll actually be able to serve now 90 students, because our PPA, which is set by the state and the federal government, actually went down, as did our Title I funds. We were basing it on last year's PPA, because there are state, there are state and federal requirements as to when you need to get the news out. But I just learned, we'll be able to service 90. We had, as of 2 o'clock, 117 students sign up. So we will have to use a couple of academic indicators to turn away students. What that means is I'll put them on a waitlist if other students, and I'll prioritize the waitlist. If other students drop out, then we'll bring those students in. And we hope to begin services, I'd like to begin in the beginning of November, but depending on each provider, their start date may be a little bit different.
So when we say supplemental educational services, what are we, what are we really talking about?
Free tutoring.
Okay.
Free tutoring, and students are eligible based on free reduced lunch status.
Okay.
We can only serve students that fit that status. I've had many parents call, and, and ask about their children that are not free and reduced lunch, and we can't by law service those students with SES.
And as I understand it, we can't use internal tutors.
Is that correct?
Or is that?
Sort of a yes, no.
Oh.
The companies can hire our teachers or peer professionals to tutor for them.
Got it.
They pay them. So they're not tutoring for us, they're tutoring for those providers. There are some schools, larger districts, that will create their own SES program.
Oh.
In-house, where they're one of, they'd be like one of the 28 providers. But we're very new into this, and I don't know a lot about that yet. There's very few, based on the Title I conference I just went to, that actually do that.
I would think, yeah.
You're using another acronym, acronym, acronym too, a PPA, and I didn't?
That's the per pupil allocation.
Okay, sorry.
That's how, sorry, education, we have a lot of those. That's how much the district, the maximum amount the district can pay per student. So even if the provider wants to charge us $1,500 per student, and our PPA is 700, he cannot charge, the provider cannot charge us more than 700.
Very good.
And I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes.
So the tutoring, what is it like, once a week, or is it all year, or is it once a month, or?
It's different on every provider, and it's completely parent-selected. So every parent received a packet, every family received a packet, with all 28 providers with a narrative.
Got it.
Some of them online, students can go in just one hour to fulfill the requirement. Some that are face-to-face might be two to three hours per week. Some might be a hybrid, where they meet every other week. And then there's online responsibilities as well. Most of the tutoring is in reading and math. There's a few that also do science. Most of the providers service ELL and IEP students. Most of the tutoring is offered in Spanish. There are a few that offer multiple languages, 10, 12 languages. It depends on the provider. It's, they're all very unique. And it is posted on our website, for parents who obviously lost it, or whatever, can, can get another copy. I also held an informational parent night a week or two ago. Did not have a huge turnout, but, but I did go through the process, and we had almost a dozen providers there to actually speak directly with the families.
I'm sorry, one other question.
Sure.
And what will the assessment be? Do you do a pre-assessment and a post-assessment, and?
It's, we actually are not allowed to, to assess the students. But the providers, most of them offer a diagnostic test, pre-test, and then a post-test. And they actually have to enter that data into a state system that I have access to, so I can go in and see how the students did. Now, those aren't our assessments.
Right.
So every provider could use a different assessment.
So they're not required to use a particular?
It's not a uniform assessment. So I don't know that I will necessarily know how to.
How to decipher.
Each and every assessment.
Set in with our, I'm like.
But there is a whole system for it, where you can log in, and you can see, for even with the online, you can see, you know, how the students are progressing.
Based on their measurement.
Based on their measurement, yes.
Which they decide how to measure.
So I suppose that might be like you were saying, we're just, you're just learning now about some of these, and very few schools are doing like their own in-house, which might make it somewhat fruitful to maybe look at doing in-house, or just seeing what that would, what that would entail, only because it would keep it under our roof. It would make sure that the, who is providing is actually aware of what we're doing, and then using all the same standards to measure pre and post.
Right.
Right?
And that may be something we consider down the road, but we already have in-house tutoring programs. The difference is that we control our in-house tutoring programs. And if we elect to become a provider, we have to apply for that through the state. And then we're governed by whatever their protocols are.
Yeah, can't use ours.
Right.
Can't use ours. And then we also can't.
He'd be a state provider?
Tractual issues.
Always strings, always tricky, tricky.
By 28.
Actually, we had over 100. There were over 100 provided by the state of Illinois that were approved to be supplemental educational service providers. From there, I narrowed it to those that were willing to tutor. From there, I narrowed it to those that were willing to tutor high school, because obviously we're a high school district. Then I sent an email to the remaining, which was a, I'd have to look at my exact numbers, but approximately 60. And this is all the steps that the state requires you to do, so I'm going through each step, and asked them if they were interested in serving our students, because some are approved for the state, some are approved for the county, some are approved for your school district. So you have to make sure they're approved for all three. If they responded that they were interested in serving our students, then they had, we have a state-provided narrative, 28 responded. And that's where we came with 28. Now, the 1 technically has two different locations, so I'm not, the state considers it 28, it might actually be 29.
I guess, let me re-ask my question, why didn't we just select 2 or 3?
We can't do that.
We have to select 2.
It's all parental choice.
Yeah.
So in other words, every family received, and we created this on our own, based upon a state model, an application form where they have to list their top three. And we are required by law to try and make it so every student gets their top choice. If a provider says, no, you only have two students, and I, I need a minimum of 10, let's say, then I have to go to choice number two, and see what the second one is, and then go to that one. If we get beyond choice number three, then I need to reconnect with families to find out which ones they're interested in. And we, and I'm very careful about that, because I've had families call, probably fielding nearly a dozen emails or calls a day about this, and made it very clear to parents who asked me to just pick one, that, that we're not allowed to do that. I can sit and go through the narrative and explain which ones are math, which ones are science, which ones are ELL, and all that, which I've done, but I can't pick them for them, and we cannot narrow the list.
You can't make recommendations either, I'm sure.
No.
You can't make recommendations, but you could say, these providers are all online.
Oh.
These providers deal with all ELL. So that's, I wouldn't call it a recommendation, but you can help them to narrow the, the skull.
What service they want.
Oh, boy.
Trust me, I have a color-coded one, just at my office that I use all the time.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you for filling us in.
Yeah, yeah. This is crazy. Georgia.
I think I get to stand. Yeah. All right, so Janice and I are going to take just a few minutes to kind of break down some of the things that Gina already talked about, but by building. So you will see up there, looking at the PSAE scores for the class of 2014, as compared to the last two years, and also that explore to ACT growth that Gina mentioned. Last year was a little bit, well, it was a great year for us, and you'll see that we had a little bit of, maybe a blip there, we went up. It was very nice, but you'll notice that there's very little change, that things have stayed very consistent, which, given what Gina mentioned already about ACT and the GEM scores, and the overall progress in the district, we feel really good about, because we weren't sure this year if we would see just a little bit more of a dip in those scores. So overall, the data is very stable, and as it says up there on the left in the fine print, Gina already mentioned, South High did not make adequate yearly progress, which was set at that 92.5 percent. That said, we had a lot of good news at South. We had five subgroups that made AYP in reading, the all, the white, the black, the Asian, and the economically disadvantaged. And then we had two subgroups that also made it in math, and those groups were the black subgroup and the Asian subgroup. So we were particularly pleased that South High overall made AYP with seven subgroups, which was an increase of four from last year. So we were very excited about that, and we were very excited that the reading scores went up for every group, so.
We have an indication of, obviously, we didn't meet the 92.5. What was the overall meaning or exceeding percentage?
Um, I do not have that in my hand, but Gina might have that.
Thank you.
Hang on. Sorry, lots of papers.
It's okay.
So for South High School in reading, the all students was 69, do you want all, 69.6?
Just the final one.
Um...
The alls.
That's our all. And then for math, 70.1.
Thank you.
And then, again, our African-American students met in both reading and math, and we were very excited about that. We think that has, you know, potentially a lot to do with a lot of the work that Steve's initiated in the last couple of years, connecting with those families and those students. So a lot of exciting news, a lot of the teachers at the beginning of the year were really excited about the reading growth, because as you know, we've spent a lot of time, and a lot of energy on literacy coaching, and reading courses, and really serving students in those areas. This goes along with some of the data that Gina already shared. We continue to have a rising enrollment in our AP classes, and this data obviously ends with last year, but if you'll notice, in 2013, you may notice that the unique students enrolled in AP classes went down by a few students, but you'll notice that the percentage of the eligible population actually went up. So it's really a larger number, we just had fewer students that were eligible in that particular year. We also continue to have an increase in the number of AP tests that are taken, with significant numbers of students earning 3s, 4s, and 5s. So you'll see the, since 11, those have gone up, we had 625 tests taken, then 683 in 2012, and then 697 last year. And we anticipate, actually, you'll see on the next slide, broken down for the AP language course, because we've been kind of following that one in particular, that's one that a lot of students take, that last year we had another 10 students take that to make a total of 110, and 88 percent of those kids earn 3s, 4s, and 5s. Now, we think it's somewhat logical that as we continue to really push kids to work at the very, you know, at the top level they can work at, that you may see some years where the scores, you know, not as many kids get 3s, 4s, and 5s, but they're still having that AP experience, they're challenging themselves, they're taking the tests, and that's great. And then, we don't need to go back, Gina, but you also have in there unique students enrolled in honors courses, that continues to rise. Last year, we had 803 of the students, unique students, that were taking honors courses, which equates to 27.4 percent of the population, which is up about 2 percent from the previous year. So that's another thing that's very exciting. As you can see there, we had two National Merit semifinalists this year, and six commended students, and we did have a student who scored a perfect 36 composite on the ACT. The last thing listed there, I believe you've heard over the, probably the last few years, one of the things we've been working on with our parents, specifically freshman parents, is a program we have called Mustang Team Night. We look, as the first quarter progresses, at students who are starting to struggle, and we notice that maybe their grades, they're getting a D, they could even be failing a course, and so we reach out to those families, invite them in, and we're revamping that a little bit this year. We're not 100 percent sure exactly what that's going to look like, but we do know that we will be having an evening meeting in December with the students and the parents, and then we're going to break the students out separately, and do something with them during the day, and we haven't done that before. So we're looking forward to see, you know, exactly what that looks like. And then the members of the administrative team, including department chairs, follow up with those kids, meet with them during the day, talk to them, and just see if things are getting better. So that's what we're up to.
Gina, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Unique, what does that imply?
Students, not students who are taking multiple, so actual students, unique students.
Okay.
Single students.
I didn't know.
So not a, a student who's taking four AP classes only counts as one.
One, okay.
I'll be talking about North High's data findings, which is a little different for me, so I feel like I should defer to Mr. Tice, but I think I can do this. So our North High findings continue to be really strong, as you can see by the data that's up on the chart. I'm actually really most pleased with our explore to ACT growth, that is considerably above state average. So for our students, from where they enter to where they leave, they are growing beyond expectations, and so that's something we are very pleased to see. And as both Gina and Georgia have already mentioned, we did see some dips in the ACT scores because of the different protocol in reporting, but we still ended up with a very high score of 23.6, which was much higher than the state average. We had one subgroup, economically disadvantaged, that made AYP in reading and mathematics, and that's partly because of our smaller subgroups and what it takes to make safe harbor, it's a very complicated formula, but our students, as you know Gina had mentioned, are doing better, but, you know, when you're looking at different groups of students, that's hard to track. But I personally really take a lot of stake in the AP findings, so I'd like to take a look at those. Like South High, we have been showing a strong increase in the amount of students who are in our AP enrollment, are in our AP courses, and we've been working very hard to enroll them there, so we've been pleased to see that. From 2011 to 2013, we went from 536 to 588 students, so well over a third of our students are enrolled in an AP class, which is very impressive. And if you look at the number of AP exams taken, you'll see that from 2010 to 2013, we've actually increased by over 100 tests. That's a significant increase. Yet, we have stayed in the 80, you know, close to 84 percent of passing, which is considerably higher than what you would see across the nation. So because the AP is based on a college board curriculum, and it's something, you know, that we are directly teaching, our students are doing very well on those tests, I take a lot of stock in that to say that, you know, our students are very well-prepared for college and indeed are earning college credit at the high school level. So that's very good news. In our honors classes, we've also increased our enrollment, we had 652 in 2010, and we're up to 706 in 2012/13. So we are moving students up, both in the honors classes and in the AP classes, and they are seeing around the same level of success as when we had 100 fewer students in those classes. So I'm very happy with that. And then, I'm just actually going to skip down to the AP English Language and AP Calc today with the AP theme. I picked those two numbers because I wanted to show you a junior English class and a senior math class, to show that we're not just, you know, focusing on one subject or one age group. From 2009 to 2013, we more than doubled our AP English Language enrollment, and you'll see that we have a 97 percent pass rate of 3s, 4s, or 5s. So we have increased it and actually increased our pass rate as well. So that's a credit to the work that's being done at the school. And then in our senior course, our AP Calc AB, and we also have doubled it, and again, we increased it from 81 to 89 percent. So in fact, in both of those, we more than doubled it, and so we're seeing a lot of success there. And we still have good news on the ACT front, we had three students who scored a perfect 36, which is very unusual, and we had three semifinalists and seven commended students for National Merit, and we had one National Achievement student, that's an award that's given to a minority student. So continue to have lots of good things happening at North High.
Gina, what was the composite again for North High School, even though we didn't meet the 92 percent?
For North High, the percent of all was 75.5 in reading and 76.5 in math.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to close, we are committed to continuous improvement that's focused on the district goals and district strategic plan. In a couple of weeks, you'll hear about the district improvement plan through Rising Star, and next month, our school improvement plans, which will be focused on raising student achievement. We are also implementing, obviously, the Common Core standards with Math 1, and with speaking and listening standards, and also working on implementation for next year of the writing standards, and then of course, Math 2.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Lots of good work, lots of good work. Nancy, can I ask a couple of questions?
I'm just going to ask if anybody had questions.
Just, I did want to just remind people that even New Trier did not make those, and I think, what, six high schools in Illinois last time made, made the 92.5 percent?
I think last year, we had six or eight.
Yeah.
I did call a contact I have at the state this morning again, to try and get a number, because there will be some schools that made it by what's called safe harbor, which is a growth model that is extremely difficult for anyone to explain. I was told a week ago, when I contacted her, that you'd have an answer for me this morning. When I called her this morning, she told me maybe Friday.
Okay.
So as soon as I get that, I'm more than willing to share it, but I suspect on Friday I might be told the following week.
It's coming. And then another question, what do we know about the progress of No Child Left Behind? What, what's the administration, federal admin, excuse the administration doing, or...
Representatives of Illinois are still seeking a waiver for the state of Illinois for NCLB. One of the things that's held up the waiver in the past is the state superintendent, Christopher Cook, has not agreed to attach student performance to teacher evaluation yet, because the law that was passed several years ago says it will begin in 2015. The federal Department of Education wants it to start immediately, ergo, they're holding up a waiver.
Oh.
So I, I do have a sense, though, that because of the issues surrounding or involved in attaching the student performance, I mean, it's a, it's a great concept in theory, but in practice, it's very difficult to implement. And so because of some of those issues surrounding that, I have a sense the Department of Education is sort of softening its stance, but as the federal government is functioning so well at this point...
Really? It's really heartening.
I'm not sure what's going to happen in terms of that waiver going forward. Hopefully, it will go forward by this time next year. But a lot of what we do is based on the fact we are still sort of governed by NCLB.
Right, I understand.
Some of the things that we do have to do, have to report about, we would not necessarily have to report about had that, had the waiver gone through.
And it's not that we don't want to help these students, it's just that these, these regulations make it difficult. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was really... Wonderful, wonderful reports, wonderful, wonderful news. We'll move on then to the reception of visitors, and this is the opportunity for anybody who would like to...
We're missing something, Dr. Cuffin?
Yes, district goals.
District goals.
Goals.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let's talk about district goals.
I have indicated to the board via Friday memos, Mike had several questions about the goals at our last board business meeting. Mike did come, and because there were a lot of questions, I did not capture all of them during the meeting, he was very gracious about coming in and sat with us, and we went through some of the issues that Mike had in detail. There were a few, a couple of things I thought would be clarified, or shouldn't be clarified, that came out of that meeting. One, we do differentiate between something called an ongoing goal and completed goal. And, and really, ongoing goal may, is something that it's in place, but we have to continue to work at it. Still requires energy, it's still evolving, it still requires a lot of leadership support, change, a lot of people's time. An example would be developing type 2 and type 3 interventions. Example, the PBIS program. An example, creating more opportunities for kids to take advanced placement courses. An example would be STEM courses. Those are all things that, we have things in place, but we're going to, we need to continue to work on increasing, improving, sustaining them. And then we have completed goals, which would be, for example, the Read 180 program that was in our strategic plan several years ago. We in fact implemented that plan, it is up and running. Right now, it's sort of institutionalized. So other than the teachers doing it every day, there is no need for us to focus on it anymore, ergo, it's a completed goal, even though we're still doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
We did go through the document, and any, any goal that we had listed as completed, we took off. And there are several, and because of the time, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but there were several in facilities that were taken off, there were several in communications that were taken off, and there were several in, oh, resources, personnel, and staff development. We just took them off, they're not lost, and frankly, we're working on a way to incorporate that into the, the master document. That's not something we had done before, we're going to work on doing that, so they're not lost, and frankly, we can bring them back if we feel... and frankly, we can bring them back if we feel the need to work on them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mike, uh, in his, um, asked several questions about goals that appeared to be the same from previous years. Uh, there were several that were not addressed or completed adequately, and in fact, we are doing them again for that purpose. Um, there are a couple of goals where, you know, our thinking was perhaps the board has lost institutional history, and it, it might be worthwhile at some point in time to discuss. Uh, one example would be the, um, review of the co-teaching model. The reason that we decided to review it initially was, uh, we put a lot of resources into co-teaching, and we don't really have a quantitative way, or we haven't had one, that, that really analyzes the value of those resources. Uh, we think it works, people like it, I mean, we have, we have results, but is that because of co-teaching or something else? And frankly, it's been very difficult to quantify, which is why we're still working on it, but we are working on it. Uh, but there are some, there are some of these that have an institutional history that might have been four or five years ago, because it was quite a different board that initially determined these. And, um, we did talk about the fact that, in terms of the goal of using district facilities, uh, it's been sort of an expectation, especially since we've improved our outside facilities significantly in the last two or three years, that we, we increase our facility usage. But perhaps it's an, an area we may need to come back and discuss, because it has ramifications. For example, uh, do we rent our, um, athletic fields to private groups who are going to have contests on Saturday night where they drink beer or
Problem, right.
Stay up late and make noise, because that, it may be, uh, we are in fact renting the facility, we are in fact getting some revenue. Uh, many times, those are our residents who are using it, but that also has a corollary effect in the neighborhood. We are, we do have neighbors, and we have some responsibility to them as well. Uh, so I, I think that's probably a board discussion sometime in the future about what do we really, we talk about facility usage, what do we really want to accomplish? What do we expect, how much more do we push envelope, and are we gonna go beyond, uh, renting to, to community groups that serve our students or our potential students versus other uses? Uh, and I think that's, whether very few minor wording changes, that's about it.
That's good work.
Very good.
Any other questions or discussion? Now we'll move on to the reception of visitors. And, uh, this is an opportunity to address the board on any issue.
All right.
Hearing nothing? Um, we need a motion to go into closed session?
Before we do that, can I ask a question? Regarding these district goals, did we need to, do we need to approve them?
I was, uh, my thinking, Mike, was I would review these briefly tonight, so everyone heard that, and we would approve those at the October business meeting.
Right.
And I'll work with Joanna on getting a red line copy.
Okay.
That would be helpful, yeah.
I think, there wasn't, there aren't a lot of, there isn't a lot of change, but I think a red line copy would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Just so everyone knew what the timetable was.
Okay, we still need a motion to go into closed session?
So, well, actually, we need to read this, yes.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So, um, uh, should I read both, A and B? All right, so I will, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for A, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probably or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes. And for B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or the, of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I can give import?
Aye.
Dean Fackman?
Aye.
Jeff Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Terrence Pavlicic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanaro?
Aye.
Nancy Cupcup?
Aye.
Moving to closed session.